Wonderful. Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd, 2025 Eugene Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Jason Lear and I'm Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. To begin this evening, I'd like to call on Commissioner, um, let me say we're gonna go with Commissioner Beeson uh for the city's land acknowledgement statement.
Okay, let me, and they could read it, I've got it here.
Thank you.
Since time immemorial, the Kalapooia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance of wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth, reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapooia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government, forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. City of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as the Kalapooia Elhi. Kalapooia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon, Confederated Tribes of the Sletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the Planning Commission recognizes that what we do today will affect the many generations who will come after us.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Beeson, and thank you to everyone joining us in this virtual meeting format. Today, our meeting will begin with public comment, followed by an informational work session on rental housing cost burden in Eugene. Anyone wishing to join the meeting online can do so by following the instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. Planning Commission meetings can also be viewed by watching a livestream available on our website or the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21. For those who join the meeting via computer device or phone, your microphone, webcam, and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting as an attendee. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't done so already, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue. And you can do that in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer laptop or other smart device, click once on the hand icon on the menu. And for those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. Public comment is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the Planning Commission on any topics except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. As a reminder, your hand must be raised to be in the queue for public comment. Is there anyone wanting to provide public comment?
Yes, looks like we have seven in the queue right now.
Fantastic, so I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Uh, well, hello, everyone. My name is Crystal Fisher. The Planning Commission has allotted a maximum of 10 minutes for public comment this evening. First, we have a little housekeeping before we proceed with the public comment period tonight. Just a reminder, the public comment period for the Public Health Standards Code Amendment, uh, city file number CA 2503, closed at 5:00 PM today. If you would like to provide comments on the Public Health Standards Code Amendment, you may provide your comments during the city council public hearing scheduled in February of 2026. To ensure that everyone wishing to speak tonight has an adequate opportunity to do so, uh, each speaker will be limited to, uh, looks like we have seven, so is a minute, Chair Lear, okay?
I think that works.
Okay, we will be limiting speakers to one minute. I will announce whose turn it is to provide public comment as well as who is up next. Uh, when your name is announced for public comment, I will enable the allow to speak function, uh, which will allow you to unmute, but will not allow you to turn on your video. Uh, please do not unmute until it is your turn for public comment. I will let you know when you have, um, 20 seconds remaining in your allotted time. When the public comment is concluded, your microphone will be muted. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. With these instructions out of the way, it looks like we have Greg Bryant, who will be our first commenter tonight. And Greg, I'm allowing you to unmute now. You will have to unmute yourself before. Perfect. All right, you will have a minute once you begin speaking.
Oh, excellent. Well, um, I'm, uh, here, I from the South University Neighborhood Association Board. We've got a, a number of issues. Let's see what I can do with in a minute. Uh, one is the effect that I, I warned, uh, or that we warned about, uh, at, uh, earlier in the year of this, the zoning deregulations effect on our neighborhood. Basically has, has come to pass, and if you want to see how, uh, a monster apartment rental, market rate rental can be built in the middle of a, a hundred-year-old neighborhood and destroy it, come to 22nd and Alder and take a look for yourself. Uh, it's, uh, it, uh, it has disturbed hundreds of people who see it and and, uh, everyone who lives around it blocks the sun, does many bad things. Okay.
Thank you, Greg Bryant. Okay, next up, I'm gonna lower your hand as well. Uh, next up, we have Stanley Taylor.
My name is Stan Taylor. I am with Indivisible Eugene Springfield, and I'm here to talk briefly about, uh, the Amazon warehouse that's to go in by the airport. I want you to know that we oppose it. We think that it was not given pro- proper notice under Oregon law. And we also are gonna be talking about following a type five amendment to the industrial light zoning, industrial light zoning, uh, to change the nature of that zoning so that this type of warehouse could not be brought into the city of Eugene. Again, I think this, uh, warehouse application was not properly noticed to the public
20 seconds.
under Oregon 455.050. The owners of the building are supposed to be disclosed to the public for transparency purposes, and that doesn't, didn't happen here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, next up, we have, um, Eloise Parrish-Muller. You should have speaking privileges now. You will have to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, my name's Eloise Parrish-Muller, and I'm a lifelong resident of Eugene and a graduate of the University of Oregon with a degree in environmental science. Um, I'm here today in support of the campaign to stop the construction of an Amazon distribution center in West Eugene, a development which would cause massive increases in air pollution in an area of our community which is already disproportionately affected by industrial pollution and poor air quality. Given the lack of adequate community engagement and consultation in association with this project, those of us commenting today would like to know how we can get our questions answered by the commission. Um, we'll be sending a follow-up email after this session, so if you're not able to answer questions during this meeting, please respond to that.
20 seconds.
So that we can figure out how to start a conversation around this and have adequate, um, public engagement going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ruth Ren, you are up next.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ren. I've lived and worked and paid taxes and voted in Eugene for over 30 years, and I'm opposed to the Amazon warehouse also. It's Amazon's standard practice to deliberately hide their plans from the public using NDAs to conceal their identity so the community doesn't know what's happening until it hits them. That's unethical and it should be illegal. So why are Eugene city officials colluding with Amazon in this process? Amazon is a predatory corporation. They won't bring good jobs because they will replace workers with robotics as soon as possible. They'll extract as much as they can, use electricity and water, dominate our streets, undermine our local economy, and they'll leave when it's
20 seconds.
So let's be good stewards of this land and let's slow down this process and research this project before they move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. All right, it looks like Teresa M., you are up next. And you should have permissions to talk now, but you will have to unmute.
Hi, I live in Ward One. I've been here for decades. Um, I'm also an organizer with Indivisible. Um, and yeah, I understand the commission exists to help plan for a better Eugene. And if that's so, then it looks like the proposed e-commerce facility off Highway 99 slipped by you somehow. And I'm hoping you'll send up an emergency flare for the city council so they don't risk having another Heineck situation on their hands here today and gone tomorrow. Um, the warehouse has all the earmarks of an Amazon project, and it's bad news. Um, taxation, labor, safety, the environment, respect for privacy and democracy, they, their record stinks. Uh, letting this corporate giant get a foothold in our
20 seconds.
disaster. Given that this project has advanced without adequate public discussion, please tell us what legal options do we have to challenge this? Thank you.
Thank you. And Adrian, you are up next. And you will have to unmute before you begin speaking.
Okay, am I, am I unmuted?
You are, yes.
Oh, yeah, oh. I'm a, I'm a very low-budget landlord in Eugene. I, and I grew up here. I'm recommending a serious extension of the current list of projects that are exempt from building inspection and exempt from rental rules. Uh, the erasure of the paragraph defining a family was a huge step forward that way. And I'd like to see considerate consideration of igloo-style heating, 50-volt electricity, compost sewage instead of black water, sandbox gray water, gravity-fed water handling, fireproof building materials, single-story permit extent exemption, inspection upon arms-length sale and non-contract rental payment without rental enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then it looks like we have Charmaine Lanning. You're up next. And you will have to unmute before you begin speaking.
Well, I'm just reiterating, uh, what the other folks have said, that I'm angry and alarmed at the way the Amazon distribution center is being foisted on us. They're using backdoor task tactics which enables them to avoid significant citizen involvement. The permit is no ordinary project. It's this warehouse the size of six football fields, over 2,000 vehicle trips per day, adding to more traffic, road use, and air pollution. I ask for a pause in certification of this project and citywide public participation in its acceptance or denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I do not see any other, uh, speakers in the queue at this time. Gonna give just one more moment in case anybody didn't get in the queue and thought they were. Okay, looks like, uh, that concludes, uh, our public comment period for this evening.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone for sharing your comments. As always, feel free to contact staff if there are comments you are not able to provide or that you wish to get to us in a different manner. I'll now close public comment. Next, we'll ask if any of the members of the Planning Commission want to respond to public comment. And I guess I just wanted to maybe start off by telling folks who have kind of asked us specifically about the Amazon warehouse that that isn't really a decision that comes before Planning Commission. Um, there may have been some activity on it before I was on several years past, but it's definitely not, we're definitely not the decision-makers when it comes to that. And, uh, those, those comments may be better directed to city council and to some of the planning staff. But definitely want to give any other planning commissioners a chance to respond more directly if you've got anything else. Okay, um, for our next agenda item, I'll turn it over to Alyssa Hunter.
All right, thank you, Chair Lear. Uh, our next agenda item is Planning Commission election. So annually, you vote in a new chair, uh, and a new vice chair, um, starting with the chair. Um, often, the vice chair, um, is interested in the chair position. Um, that is not always the case. And, um, I have spoken with Commissioner Bailing, and I hope you don't mind me bringing this up with folks, but one thing that we had talked about is just, um, having her remain, if, if that is the, the Planning Commission's pleasure, having her remain in the, the vice chair position for, for the upcoming year. Um, and have someone else, um, step in as chair, and then she could do the rotation in the following year. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But it is, um, Commissioner Lear, up to you to coordinate the nomination process and the voting and whatnot, and then whoever is the successful chair actually, uh, will convene the rest of the meeting.
Thanks, Alyssa. Um, having spoken with Commissioner Bailing, I did mention that I would be willing to serve as another chair with maybe the expectation that she'd have some more opportunities to chair meetings. But I would also be more than happy to clear the field and, uh, let someone else who's eager to stand up as, as chair to do it. So just wanted to mention that. And with that, I suppose we'll take nominations. Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, thanks, Chair Lear. Um, I would, um, gladly nominate, uh, Commissioner Chair Lear, uh, for another term as chair. Um, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second that.
Thanks, Commissioner Ramey. So a little bit awkward for me here, but just again, want to make sure that there's more opportunity for if anyone else would like to put themselves forward. And I'd also be happy to step aside and allow someone else to, to serve as chair for this upcoming year. I don't see that, so I suppose we'll take a vote now. All in favor of having me remain on as commissioner and, uh, chair for another year, please raise your hands.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioner Edwards. And it looks like then it is unanimous. Sorry that we couldn't have all the members of the commission here. It's tough this time of year to get everybody in the room at one time. So we'll now move on for, uh, nominations for vice chair. I would like to nominate Commissioner, uh, and current Vice Chair Bailing.
I second that nomination.
Okay, anyone want to put any other nominations forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote then. All in favor, please raise your hands or say aye as appropriate.
Aye.
Okay, so we're unanimous on that. And I'll continue to run the meeting here as we move into the next segment. Our third and final section of the meeting is a work session on the capital improvement program. Um, it is specifically on the rental housing cost burden in Eugene. And for this item, I'd like to turn it over to Leah Roush to begin the staff presentation. Following the staff presentation, the commission will have the opportunity to ask questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair Lear. Thank you, um, members of the commission. Thanks for having us here tonight. Yeah, my name's Leah Roush. I'm a senior planner in community planning and design on the Planning Division.
Commissioner Ramey, I'm sorry, before you get started, Leah, are you just noting that you're leaving a little early?
Yeah, yes, I, I just wanted to apologize to Leah and frankly, everybody. But I'll be, I'll be leaving at 6:15, so I won't, I won't be here that long. But I'll try to catch up on video later, and I'm really glad I was here for the elections because I couldn't be happier with the way they turned out. Thank you too for, for doing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramey.
And, um, Amber, if you want to share a screen whenever you're ready. And we are going to talk a little bit about severe rent burden in Eugene um, this evening, and we'll have some opportunities for questions and discussion from you all. At the end of the meeting, I'm joined by Amber Friedman from the Planning Division, as well as Genevieve Middleton from the Community Development Division, who will both, um, present a little bit to you all tonight. Um, so each year, the state requires cities with high rates of severe rent burden to hold a public meeting. Eugene has exceeded this threshold, um, for many years, where more than 25% of renter households experience severe cost burden. Um, and that severe cost burden is paying more than 50% of their income on their housing costs. State law, state law requires that the city, um, meet to discuss the causes and consequences of severe rent burden, barriers to reducing rent burden, and some of the possible solutions. Because these topics are so integrated with some of our ongoing work, we wanted to take this opportunity to update you all on some of the data around affordability on rent burden, existing city policies, programs, and investments to address affordability and some of the root causes of rent burden, and then how it connects to our current work in planning. So in addition to actually hosting today's meeting, the state also requires that we share data on new housing development each year, as well as submit a survey to the state that provides some specific information on affordability of housing within Eugene and the actions the city is taking or plans to take to increase affordability and otherwise reduce rent burden. So the attendance of this meeting, including, um, the affiliation and location of attendees, will be reported to the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department as a part of this kind of, um, public meeting requirement. For folks who are joining us on YouTube or TV at home and didn't fill out the Zoom survey for the meeting, um, we'll ask that you please share your affiliation and location through this QR code on the screen. You should be able to scan it with the camera of your smartphone or by entering, um, the link that's on the screen. So you'll also, if you go to that form, you'll have the opportunity to provide any additional comments to staff, um, into the city about severe rent burden and housing affordability. The form will remain open until the end of December. Um, and then when we wrap up the meeting today, we'll also share this slide again, um, if you're unable to pull that form up right now. So with that, our agenda for tonight, um, Amber is going to talk a little bit about what rent burden is, including the causes and consequences. And then she'll hand it over to Genevieve, who will talk a little bit about city-supported actions to address rent burden. And then I'll wrap this up by talking a little bit about how, um, this work fits into our urban growth planning. So with that, I will hand it over to Amber.
Hello, um, thanks for coming, everyone. I'm Amber Friedman. She/her pronouns. I'm an associate planner on the community planning team. Um, like Leah said, I'm here today with some colleagues, both from the Planning Division and the Community Development Division. So for some of you, today's presentation may seem like a little sense of deja vu, like maybe you've heard some of this before. Um, that's because you have, uh, most of you have at least. Myself and a few other staff have given a similar presentation in previous years to fulfill this state-required public meeting. So a lot of the things we're gonna cover today, um, are true from year to year. But I'm just gonna start with the basics. What is rent burden? Uh, Leah mentioned it, but rent burden is the percentage of household income a household spends on housing expenses. So when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing expenses, they're considered rent cost burdened. A household that spends more than 50% of their income on housing is considered severely rent cost burdened. The formula to calculate your rent burden is total monthly housing expenses divided by gross monthly income. Uh, so the example on the slide shows a household who pays $2,000 a month in combined rent and utilities and has a monthly income of around $3,500. To determine that rent burden, you would divide 2,000 by 3,500, which equals point 57, um, to get that as a percentage, just multiply it by 100. Um, and so in this scenario, we see that the household would have a 57% rent cost burden. So we would consider this household severely rent cost burdened. As Leah mentioned, Eugene is considered a severely rent burdened city. Uh, the population in Eugene, based on 2023 data, was around 1,000, or 177,000 people, um, with over 38,000 renter households. Uh, 12,000 of those renter households are living as severely rent burdened. So they're spending more than 50% of their income on housing costs. Um, so that 12,000 is about a third of our Eugene renter population. So a third of our renter households are spending half of their income on housing costs. The graph here on the right shows both rent cost burden and severe rent cost burden. So overall, 62% of Eugene renter households experience some level of rent cost burden. Uh, the green section here represents those that are paying over 30% of their household income on housing. And the blue section is highlighting those that are paying over 50% of their household income on housing. The overall median household income in Eugene in 2022 was around $66,000, which is about $10,000 less than our state average of 76,000. Um, but for those households that identify as black or Asian in Eugene, the average household income drops into the 40,000. Um, so we're seeing 41,713 for black households and for 49,594, uh, for Asian households. These communities also experience higher average unemployment rates with 8.7% and 8.6%, as well as lower-than-average homeownership rates with 31% and 32% compared to white households, which own homes at a rate of 51%. compared to white households, which own homes at a rate of fifty-one percent. The city conducted a survey of renters involved twenty twenty-three, and the top concern for renters was affordability. The survey found that seven percent of respondents have had to move because they could no longer afford their current rent. And eight percent reported having to move in the previous two years because they could not afford a rent increase. In both of these situations, people that are aged between eighteen and thirty-five were more likely to have had to move than those renters over thirty-six. From the same survey, we see that sixteen percent of respondents reported receiving a rent increase of more than ten percent in one year. And another takeaway from the survey is that access to housing for renters with certain circumstances, especially people with conviction histories or that use housing subsidies, it's extra challenging and costly to access housing. So what causes rent burden in Eugene? Might be a logical question. There's no one answer, but there are a few contributing factors or causes. So supply and demand is one part of the puzzle. Eugene's rental vacancy rate fluctuates between three to five percent. So about five or less out of every one hundred apartments are actually available for rent at a given time. There just aren't a lot of rental units available, and that makes for a competitive market and leads to high rents. Decades of housing underproduction in Oregon has left the entire state with a shortage of housing units, short of of housing units compared to what we need to house our Oregon communities. Rent-to-income ratio is another big part of severe rent burden. In Eugene, our median rent is about fourteen hundred dollars a month, and the average annual wage or pay in Eugene, according to the U.S. Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics, is about fifty-six thousand annually. For the past several years, Eugene has conducted a rent assessment of market-rate multi-unit developments. So that means developments that do not receive subsidies to provide affordable rents to income-qualified tenants and have more than five units. So from that assessment, we found that the median rents in twenty twenty-five were one thousand four hundred and three for a studio apartment, all the way up to three thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars for a four-bedroom apartment. When we measure the affordability of rents, the assessment compared local rents with those considered fair-market rents by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we call HUD. So HUD's fair-market rents are used to determine payment standard amounts for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So our twenty twenty-five Eugene data shows that our median rents for all apartment sizes are at least two hundred and seven dollars more than the standard for the twenty twenty-five fair-market rents. So why do we care if Eugene is a severely rent-burdened city? There's a number of consequences. There are negative economic outcomes. People have less disposable income to spend in our local economy. People have less savings in the bank for unexpected expenses. We see high housing costs affecting local business economy as well. It can deter potential candidates from relocating, especially if salaries don't offset the cost of living. We also see limited housing inventories making it hard for new hires to find suitable accommodations quickly, which can delay or derail hiring decisions. There's also increased risk of experiencing homelessness. It stifles generational wealth building. One of the primary ways people build generational wealth is through homeownership. So when they spend the bulk of their income on rent, there's not much left over to save for buying a home. This is particularly concerning because it perpetuates the already systemic and existing racial wealth gap, as Black, Indigenous, and people of color are statistically less likely to own homes due to historic racist policies and practices. When individuals can't pay rent, some natural responses may be doubling up on occupancy, moving in with friends or family, or moving to a lower-cost area, either by choice or by eviction. This can result in crowding and displacement. According to the twenty twenty-three Eugene Eugene Renters Survey, eight percent of respondents reported having to move because they couldn't afford a rent increase, and seven percent have had to move because they could no longer afford the current rent. Folks that move to lower-cost areas may have longer commutes to work or school, to healthcare grocery stores, et cetera. And that contributes to less personal time for them and more carbon emissions from driving, then see an increase of cars on the road causing traffic, as well as parking congestion. Severe rent burden can include negative health outcomes. Having less money due to housing costs can lead to sacrificing necessities like healthcare and nutritious food. When people are rent burdened, they may give up other basic needs like childcare, internet access, and transportation in order to pay rent. So focusing for a minute on evictions, see that rising rents, cost burdens, rent arrears, and dwindling resources have led to an increase of rates of eviction, court filings for eviction for the non-payment of rent. In twenty twenty-three, landlords filed one thousand two hundred and eighty-four eviction court cases in Eugene, and eighty-two percent of those were for non-payment of rent. In twenty twenty-four, landlords filed one thousand seven hundred eviction court cases in Eugene, which was an increase of thirty-two percent over that year. Eighty-seven percent of those court filed evictions were for non-payment of rent, so an increase of five percentage points since twenty twenty-three. According to data from the National Equity Atlas, Eugene had about three thousand six hundred and forty households that were behind on rent in twenty twenty-four. That comes out to be about nine percent of our total estimated Eugene renters. So why isn't this problem solved yet? So if we think about rent cost burden as a math formula, we have housing costs divided by household income. So to get a smaller cost burden number, we either need to increase the denominator, our household income, or decrease the numerator, which is housing costs. So one of the strategies is to increase wages. In Eugene, we have lower-than-average, we have we have wages that are lower than the state average. So but with the tools we have, we are focusing on reducing or stabilizing housing costs through housing production. But there are two pieces to this math equation. So focusing on housing production, but the city of Eugene doesn't build housing. We support programs and projects that do with funding and other resources. Our nonprofit and private developers are the ones doing the development and construction. Unfortunately, there are a number of barriers to progress related to housing production. Some of these include cost and availability of lands, materials, as well as construction labor costs, city permit costs, and system development charges. When acquiring a piece of land to build on, any old piece won't do. The piece needs to be connected or able to connect to infrastructure, has to be designed for the type of structure you want to build. For example, not all land is zoned for multi-unit housing. So if you're trying to build an apartment complex, you have to find a site that is zoned appropriately or go through a process to see if it can be rezoned. So once you have your perfect piece of land that meets your needs, the barriers still continue. Increasing inflation, high interest rates, and supply chain demands are proven to negatively impact the ability of developers of all scales and sizes to build housing and pace with our community need. In addition to all that, we've seen declines in federal investments in housing. So finally, getting to solutions. What can be done about barriers? What is the city already doing? Who else is working on this issue? To answer those questions, I'm going to pass this off to Genevieve Middleton, the Affordable Housing Policy and Planning Manager at the City of Eugene.
Thank you, Amber. In the following slides, I will be highlighting the city's efforts in three key areas. Production of income-qualified affordable housing units, preservation of existing affordable housing, and protections available to Eugene renters. I'll also touch on additional community-driven solutions aimed at reducing housing cost burdens. The city supports the production of affordable housing with federal, state, and local funding sources. Affordable housing here means income-qualified housing that is accessible to moderate, low-income households by using a mix of subsidies and incentives. The city receives two federal grants, CDBG and HOM from HUD. These grant activities and projects must benefit households at eighty percent area median income and below. The HOM program focuses on creating housing units typically for households at sixty percent area median income and below. And the picture shown here is a HOM-funded project currently under construction called Ollie Court by Homes for Good Housing Agency, and includes eighty affordable rental units and an onsite early learning center. Our other federal grant, CDBG, can be used to purchase land for future income-qualified affordable housing development. Next slide. The city has three local funding sources that supports affordable housing production. The first is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is funded by the city's local construction excise tax. Since its inception in two thousand nineteen, four million dollars is supporting the creation of four hundred and eighty-five low and moderate income homes. The fund has also been used to keep two hundred and forty-three households in their homes through rent assistance. City fee assistance, including system development charge exemptions, helps to reduce building costs for new units. More than five million dollars in fee assistance has supported the creation of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five rental and homeownership units in Eugene. An additional five hundred and seventy units are in the pipeline. The housing under construction in this photo is a forty-seven-unit affordable housing project called Legacy Park that received both Affordable Housing Trust Funds and city fee assistance. And lastly, for production, the low-income rental housing property tax exemption, referred to as LRTD, provides a twenty-year property tax exemption for low-income rental properties, reducing annual operating costs, common need amongst affordable housing providers. There are forty-five properties with two thousand three hundred and nineteen units that currently benefit from the LRTD program. Next slide. The city's rental rehabilitation program has existed for over forty years. Through the program, essential repairs to preserve affordable housing properties help to keep them a part of Eugene's housing stock. In the past twenty-five years, this program has helped to preserve more than one thousand three hundred units at thirty-eight sites in Eugene. Shown here is the recently completed rehabilitation at St. Vincent de Paul's Oakwood Manor. This site has seventy-two units with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom households and for households up to sixty percent AMI. Next slide, please. New renter protections were added to the city's rental housing code in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to help improve stability, affordability, and racial equity in rental housing. Protections include rules that cap screening fees, security deposits, and require landlords to process applications in order received, provide tenants with educational information about their rights, and documentation of the condition of the rental at move-in and out. Under these protections, landlords must also pay relocation assistance to tenants for certain types of tenancy terminations and rent increases above the state maximum. Renter protections also include support services for tenants, such as a free tenant hotline currently operated by Springfield Eugene Tenant Association, and technical assistance for landlords and code enforcement. You can learn more at eugene rental program dot org. And while the city of Eugene does not own, operate, build, or manage housing, we collaborate with many nonprofit and affordable housing providers. Although not an exclusive list, the community partners shown here develop, construct, and manage affordable housing units available to low-income households in Eugene. They include Homes for Good, Dev Northwest, St. Vincent de Paul, Cornerstone Community Housing, Shelter Care, sponsors, Square One Villages, and more. These partners also work together and with other community agencies to provide support and connections for tenants. Now I will hand the slides to Senior Planner Leah Roush to present on Urban Growth Strategies.
Awesome. Thank you, Genevieve. Okay, so in addition to the housing production, preservation, and protections programs and investments that Genevieve talked about, one of our long-term efforts to address housing production, affordability, and choice is our ongoing twenty-year urban growth planning through the Urban Growth Strategies Project. As Amber addressed, severe rent burden is closely tied to the availability of housing that meets the needs of our community and will need to ensure that we're planning for and supporting enough housing for Eugene moving forward. We've shared previously with the Planning Commission how the new Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, or the ONA, significantly changes how cities will plan for future housing needs within our urban growth boundary. Rather than planning only for population growth, we will now also account for decades of housing underproduction, housing for people experiencing homelessness, and other factors. Using the twenty twenty-five ONA, we know that Eugene will need to support the production of more than twenty-six thousand new dwelling units in the next twenty years. To meet this housing need, Eugene needs to produce seventy percent more units annually for the next ten years as compared to the last ten years. We also expect the next few years will bring a more challenging market environment with rising costs, interest rates, and shifting demands, which makes this an even steeper hill to climb. Using data from our growth monitoring program, we know that Eugene saw an average of nine hundred and sixty-five new units per year over the last decade. And of those, about one hundred each year were subsidized affordable housing. To meet our new housing need, Eugene needs to see closer to sixteen hundred new units each year for the next decade, including closer to seven hundred each year that are affordable to households with the lowest incomes. We're now also required to meet our housing need, not just through overall production, but also by affordability. The state will require that we demonstrate we're taking action in some way to meet these specific affordability needs. This chart breaks down those twenty-six thousand new dwelling units into affordability bins based on area median income or AMI. On the far left are new units needed for households with the lowest incomes. The bars in green are units needed for households making less than eighty percent of the median income, which is typically a level of affordability that's only provided through subsidized, different subsidies and incentives like the ones that Genevieve talked about. More than half of Eugene's needed housing is at these deeper levels of affordability, which is evident through the higher levels of rent burden in our community. So I'm not going to talk about the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Framework in a lot of detail tonight, but I did want to provide some context for our focus this evening. So as I just shared, the state now allocates our twenty-year housing need, which is kind of the first step in this framework. The next step is in the process is for Eugene to complete an analysis to localize and add context to that need by housing types, characteristics, and locations. That analysis will support both our housing capacity analysis, which looks at our land supply and capacity to accommodate that twenty-year housing need, and our housing production strategy, which is a newly required action plan that will identify and prioritize actions that will meet our housing need and further fair housing choice in Eugene. Tonight, I'm going to highlight the second step in the process, which is the contextualized housing need, which we'll be working on and bringing to you in twenty twenty-six. So the contextualized housing need uses current and future housing needs along with population and market trends to evaluate fair housing choice and identify fair housing issues. Fair housing choice means that people have the information, opportunity, and options to live where they choose without unlawful discrimination or facing other barriers. Fair housing issues are conditions locally that restrict fair housing choice or access to opportunity, or otherwise result in inequitable housing outcomes. The analysis must include consideration of protected classes with a particular focus on communities of color, low-income communities, people with disabilities, and tribal communities. The result of this analysis will be basically the needed housing types, characteristics, and locations that we'll need to plan for in our housing capacity and production work. The contextualized housing need is made up of a few different components, which I'll preview for you this evening. So first is understanding Eugene's historic context, specifically a review of past discriminatory actions and practices related to land use and housing. The analysis will include topics like indigenous stewardship and dispossession of land, early settlement and land ownership in Oregon, and state and federal and local laws around land and housing access. We'll look at population growth and development trends in Eugene, specific development projects and acts of displacement, and how zoning and land use planning have fit into that picture. As the Commission learned this summer, we've already begun some of this historic analysis work through a research effort called the Equity Atlas. We recently launched an online resource, which you can view using the QR code on the screen or access through the Urban Growth Strategies website. The Equity Atlas selected stories from Eugene's history of displacement, shares just one example of the many threads we identified in our research. The Equity Atlas selected stories from Eugene's history of displacement, shares just one example of the many threads we identified in our research that connects events in the past with our present context. The thread does not by any means capture the entire story of discrimination in land use and housing or of displacement, nor does it fully capture the actions taken to resist these injustices at the time or today. However, it gives us an important insight into the history of Eugene and the types of events, practices, and actions that inform our current housing landscape. So the contextualized housing need, in addition to that historic context, will also consider our current context. So the state of housing production, housing affordability, and housing choice. We'll pull together data on the demographic and socioeconomic characteristics affecting Eugene's housing needs. We'll look at trends related to housing production using growth monitoring data, and we'll complete an affordability analysis, including a review of market conditions affecting housing development, existing and expected barriers to development, and data related to affordability in Eugene. Then finally, we'll actually look at a current housing inventory, um, by types, characteristics, and locations. The next piece of this very comprehensive analysis, uh, is to better understand issues in housing choice and for communities of color, low-income communities, people with disabilities, and tribal communities. So that'll be called the Fair Housing Issue Area Analysis. The analysis will lean heavily on the work of our community development partners who regularly plan and analyze fair housing issues within the federal regulatory framework. And fair housing issues, again, are conditions that restrict housing choice or access or otherwise result in inequitable housing outcomes. So we'll look at, um, and evaluate issues related to housing tenure, so whether housing is available to rent or to own and other wealth-building opportunities through housing. We've got permanent housing to resolve homelessness, accessible and adaptable housing needs, um, housing that has access to community assets and mitigates exposure to harms. Look at trends in housing stability, anti-displacement, and displacement mitigation, as well as how we can plan to address and disrupt patterns of segregation. All of that analysis results in our twenty-year needed housing by types, characteristics, and locations. And that, um, kind of planned housing will need to remedy and mitigate any of the fair housing issues we identify. It'll need to meet our housing production target, as well as look at how we can accommodate more housing in and near mixed-use centers. I've mentioned a few times already the kind of housing types, characteristics, and locations, so that framework is going to come up a lot, and I wanted to just briefly define what that encompasses. So through the contextualized housing need and subsequently our housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy, we'll plan for housing that meets our needs, um, community needs by different types. So things like single-unit detached housing, middle housing, or multi-unit housing. We'll look at different characteristics or features of that housing. That includes things like whether it's accessible or adaptable for people with disabilities, the size of that housing, so the, the number of bedrooms and bathrooms, whether housing is being built that has layouts that support different family situations, like multi-generational housing or housing where you could age in place, or, um, whether it has other culturally relevant features. Look at, um, tenure of the housing being built in Eugene, so whether it's available for rental homeownership, um, or other kind of forthcoming ownership models like co-ops and land trusts, whether that housing is energy efficient and climate resilient, and other specific needs like whether it has onsite supportive services or, um, uses trauma-informed design. And then the last piece, so we'll plan for housing, um, the location of housing, I should say, and that's really defined as in proximity to community assets or harms. So for assets, we're thinking about things like groceries, parks, shopping, community supportive services, and high-quality transportation services, and proximity to harms, natural hazards like flooding our landslides, wildfire, um, as well as the presence of toxic emissions or highways. And we'll also look at segregation by recent income, um, throughout the city. So there's a lot of pieces to that. It's a very comprehensive and far-reaching look at our housing needs, more so than we've done in the past, um, and it's a new analysis for the city. Um, so we'll be bringing this, this back to the Planning Commission for review and discussion in a few chunks, um, but with kind of the full draft analysis complete in the fall of two thousand twenty-six. We'll do another work session with the Planning Commission as well as with State Council before we submit the, um, analysis to the state for approval. Um, we need to do that by the end of two thousand twenty-six so that it's ready to support our housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy, which are planned to be adopted by the end of two thousand twenty-seven. Okay, so with that, we threw a lot of information at you. We'd love to answer any questions or hear any discussion from the Planning Commission. And for those who are online, um, thank you for participating. Um, if you're watching at home, please do scan that Q R code or visit the online form, um, to fill out our participation survey. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Commissioner Leir.
Thank you so much, Leah, for a nice presentation. Um, want to provide an opportunity for anyone who's got questions at this time, uh, or follow-ups or anything else to, to speak up. And I know this will be coming back before us in a more substantive form, so I think we'll have a lot of chance to engage with it later, too.
That's right.
Doesn't look like any questions at this time, so thank you so much again. Um, next on our agenda, we have items from commission and staff. Are there any items or info, uh, to share from commissioners?
Sorry, hang on.
Sure, Commissioner Beeson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have several. I have some detailed questions, and maybe I'll take some of those up with staff offline. I, I think the general, I, I'm, I'm, um, I was looking back at, we, we last heard about this two years ago, and I was kind of looking back at that. So I was going through this material. There is, um, clearly, the city of Eugene has a lot going on in this area and a lot of programs. Uh, there's a, an abundance of websites and things that were listed in the material for us, and I will admit I did not get to all of that. I have looked at some of it in the past. Um, I, I guess kind of a, kind of a general question I have, maybe for all of the, all three presenters. I, I find myself, as I go through this material, wanting some more context or wanting some perspective. Um, you look back at this House bill that started this seven or eight years ago, and there are, you note in the material, there are some requirements in there about reports and about capturing data. Um, and I'm, and it, I, I was just having trouble as I went through this. I, I found myself wondering, how are we doing? Um, I, I, and I don't, I, I want to be really cautious here, as I usually try to be, since I don't have the depth of knowledge that you guys do. I appreciate all of you very much, and I know that you, you know a lot of this in detail, but I, uh, when I, when I go through it, I have this sort of a sense that we're just not making, as a city, we're really not making a lot of progress. And I guess as I talk about some of this, I'm kind of looking for some reactions from, uh, the three of you or from some of the other planning staff that's on here. I, uh, when I, when I'm, when I'm kind of looking at, um, we talk about, we talk about the number of rental units that are in the city. Can you, can you tell me, um, approximately, how many housing units that are owner-occupied? Can you give me like a proximate number? You have like thirty-seven thousand rental units. We have a hundred and eighty thousand people live here. Um, and I find myself kind of curious about, you know, are there, is there corresponding information about homeownership and mortgage burden and, you know, how all that's going? Um, but I'm, I, so when I look at the rental, I'm trying to get to something kind of specific here. You've, you've got, you've got numbers. There were like twelve thousand rental households that are severely rent-burdened. Um, and I'm kind of curious how that compares, and I know it gets to be a little complex, but how does that compare over the past seven or eight years as you've done this work and as we've monitored this? Are we, are we moving in a direction where a, a smaller percentage of people are rent-burdened in our community? I have a feeling that it's kind of growing. I don't know why I, that one thing that jumped out is the number of evictions this year is substantially, look to me, substantially higher than just a year ago. And I don't know if you had, if you look back even further than just one year, but if we'd been doing this seven or eight years, is there a trend? So I'm, let me kind of, let me kind of hold there and see if somebody has some response. I just didn't, just in general, my question would be, are we making progress at all in any of these areas as we, as we look at them?
Yeah, maybe I can speak quickly just the data pieces, and then I'll hand it over to Genevieve to talk more about trends. And that data that Amber shared comes from the American Community Survey, so the U S Census Bureau, and through the Growth, Growth Monitoring Program, we do, um, track that on an annual basis, and that's a part of kind of the, the annual reporting and growth monitoring. Um, we do look at both cost burden for renter households and for homeownership households. So, um, there certainly are lots of households that are cost-burdened, who are homeownership households. It's less than, um, than the percentage, I should say, of renter households. So in two thousand twenty-three, it was twenty-five percent of homeownership households were cost-burdened compared to that sixty-two percent of renter households. So it's certainly more severe, um, for renters. Um, but yes, there's, it's certainly present across, um, home, homeownership as well. Um, and we do look at that on an annual basis from the A C S and kind of tracking those trends. Um, you know, it goes up and down from year to year, but I wouldn't say we're seeing a lot of positive pro- progress. Um, we're seeing an increase in cost burden for renters. Um, so I think Genevieve can speak more to some of the trends that she sees in her work.
Thanks, Leah. Great question, Commissioner Beeson. And we recently published the two thousand twenty-five Eugene Springfield Consolidated Plan, and in that plan, we noted that some trends that have changed between the five-year plan previous to this one that we have seen increase in housing cost burden and severely housing cost burden um, since the previous five-year plan. So we are, your question of, is it getting worse? Yes, it's getting worse. And is the number of low-income and civ- and extremely low-income households growing? Yes, that number is growing.
Do we, um, it, uh, this is for cities in Oregon that are more than ten thousand people. I don't know how many cities that is, but it's several. Are, are most cities kind of like us with this percentage? Uh, they exceed the threshold and have to do this reporting and so on, or are we, are we a little more severely rent-burdened symptomatic than other cities, or? Do we have any information on that? Is this kind of just generally spread all across the state?
We do, um, so I don't have it handy, but I can, um, we can send it as a follow-up to, the state has recently put together a dashboard, um, that actually compares, um, cities all over the state in a variety of housing indicators, including rental house burden, rental cost burden. Um, the last time I looked at it, I want to say we were up there in the top few, um, but we could send that to you all as a follow-up.
I, I'm not real interested in generating extra work for staff. Uh, if I was to spend time, my free time, and look through some of the material that you reference in the websites, there are, there probably is additional data in there about a lot of this stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Um, and this comes from the A C S, and I can't remember if we linked that specific dashboard, but there's a lot of good data in it, so I can just send around that link to you.
Okay.
Lots of info to explore there.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna make, oh, go ahead.
I have an additional resource. It's not published yet. It will be coming out in early two thousand twenty-six. It's the Eugene Renter Protections Evaluation, and we are working with Echo Northwest to do an evaluation of some of our policies. And in doing so, Echo Northwest has done, um, has done an analysis of renter, renter household characteristics. And I can just read right here that Eugene does not see meaningful variation from its peer cities in rent burden by income level. So that is to say that a lot of our peer cities are seeing similar, um, similar rent burdens by income level and by population size. And I will have a lot more of that material, and we'll make sure that you can, um, access that when it's available.
Yeah, maybe my general, the general comment, I mean, to the extent that you guys have metrics on, on these kind of across the board that that's, and maybe, again, I, I have not been to all of the different websites, so you may have all this, but to the extent that you can make that sort of available to the community or people who are interested in this, uh, you talk about dashboards and so on, and these sort of metrics across the board, and that might show trends and how we're doing it, particularly if we can begin to identify, gosh, here are some areas where we're making some progress, and we can tie it back to some of the stuff we're doing. It just, you know, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I sometimes get a little detailed, but I sort of feel like it would help if we could connect some of the dots a little bit. Um, one last comment, then I'll stop. We, almost every, and at many meetings in the last year, we've talked about the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis and, uh, that we need twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-three new dwelling units in the next twenty years. And I know this has come up a few times. I'm, I, um, uh, I have two parts to this. One, let me just ask, I, can you clarify or verify for me the twenty-year period started last January of two thousand twenty-five?
Yeah, that's a good question. So.
When does it start?
Yeah. We are going to get, um, a housing need every year in January from the state. So I've been sharing with you all our two thousand twenty-five housing need. We'll get a new one in January. They'll kind of run that methodology every year. We'll lock in to a need for our twenty-year period, um, for the housing capacity analysis work. I expect that to be our two thousand twenty-six need, so it'll be two thousand twenty-six to two thousand forty-six will be our new twenty-year period that we're planning for. Um, but we'll officially lock that in, um, with the state next year. But they'll, they'll be running this analysis at the state level every year.
So, when we say, when we've been saying we need the twenty-six thousand, uh, this past, we're in December. The two thousand twenty-five housing development in Eugene, did that count towards the seventeen hundred we needed in year one, or is year one coming next year?
Year one for our growth monitoring and capacity analysis will be two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, okay. I, I would, I would like, uh, again, just again, a suggestion. If, if we can document that and get it clear, clear on a website somewhere, I think a lot of people in the community, we publicize this a lot. And I think it would be good if it was sort of out there, so people could kind of watch how we're doing. You know, I mean, seventeen hundred new dwelling units a year is a pretty big bite, I think. And I, I think others have thought that, too. I think it's, it's going to be, it's going to take some, some work to do that, and it would be good to be able to kind of watch how that's going. So.
Yeah, and I would be remiss to not mention, um, Heather's not here to do it, that we have our growth monitoring data dashboard on the Planning Division's website. That is currently, um, monitoring trends. We have the annual report. There's a dashboard that shows new housing units by different types, um, and we're tracking lots of different pieces of data. Um, that's all based on our last twenty-year planning period, so it'll all get kind of refreshed when we adopt the new housing capacity analysis. refreshed when we adopt the new housing capacity analysis. But same structure, it'll be that annual reporting, how, how are we doing compared to that twenty-year need? So we do have a place for that, and those dashboards are available.
Okay, well, let me, I, I will go there and look at that, and I'll talk to Heather a little bit if I have other questions. I just, thank, thank you. And again, I appreciate what, what you guys do. There's, this is a very, well, it's just complex, and there's a lot to it, and I, I think there's a lot of people in the community who are really probably interested in how this is all going to proceed, so that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the good questions.
Thanks, Commissioner Beeson. Vice Chair Bailor.
Thank you. You may have just answered the question, Leah. Maybe the answers are in the dashboard. What I didn't glean from the presentation is of the projects currently in process, under construction, completed this year, how much of it addressed the affordable housing need, even not by type, just totals? And if it won't be available on the dashboard till 2026, I understand, but if the dashboard currently addresses that, I'd, I'd like to check out that resource also. I mean, you presented the problem beautifully, and something, some things are happening. I mean, I, I went to Commissioner Lear's wonderful groundbreaking yesterday, so I know that there are affordable housing units under construction, and how are we doing?
Yeah, so the growth monitoring data dashboard doesn't have 2025 data yet, so you usually get that annual report, and the dashboard gets updated at the first quarter of the following year. So we don't have that data up there yet, but it will be available in the next six months or so, four months. But I don't know if Genevieve, you all have another resource around affordable housing development that you want to mention?
So if we're thinking about the total need for affordable housing units in this production year versus where we're at under construction, those are numbers that I can pull. I don't have them off the top of my head, unfortunately. It's always an interesting question of what has been completed this year and is open and accessible to the community versus what is under construction? And so we have an exceptionally large list of projects under construction or in development towards construction. So we have projects that are working on finishing their finances and leading towards construction right now. We also have projects that are sitting on the state's waitlist, waiting funds. And so we have projects in the pipeline in all levels of development, from the initial planning, gathering finances, groundbreaking, currently under construction, which you saw two, two references to in tonight's presentation. And it is a large portfolio of projects that are in the pipeline. If you would like those numbers, we can pull them, but we'd have to be specific about what do you, which numbers do you want? Do you want numbers that are just anything in the pipeline or things under construction or have recently opened? So happy to help, but need a little more direction.
I personally would like to know projects that are open currently, and of the ones in the pipeline, how many are in that pre-construction phase and how many are under construction? Those are kind of the three major categories, I would think.
Yep.
That would be very interesting and very helpful, and thank you for all your work, all of you.
Great, we can get you those numbers, thanks.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thanks, Chair Lear. I just, I had a quick question. I, you know, I was at an event this afternoon, reason I was a little charged, so I apologize, up in Portland, and it was, the governor was announcing a, a new economic development initiative, and a question came up of her having to do with the amount of vacancies with subsidized low-income properties and, and units in Portland. And that, I, I, I found that kind of odd, but I'm curious if we happen to know if we have a lot of vacancies in the, in the subsidized or in the, you know, affordable units? And if not, do we, do we track that at all? I'm just kind of curious about our own community.
That's a great question. And we do not have a way to specifically track all of the different subsidized units and where they're at as far as vacancy or, or availability. Amber might be able to speak towards vacancy rates of some of the larger subsidized affordable housing sort of apartment complexes that we have. I can't remember the number, but I know it would be very low. And then just speaking to other affordable housing developers, Homes for Good Housing Agency has an extremely large waitlist for you, for folks who want to get into units. And so there is no.
Okay.
Vacancy there. Amber, do you remember the reference to vacancy from that report?
That report doesn't include affordable housing. The report is market rate housing.
It's only market rate, okay.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought that was.
I was gonna say, I can jump in for just a sec. Having worked in this field, it is very low in Eugene, and anecdotally, it sounds like the number, especially for smaller units, has gone up quite a bit in Portland from being at near zero, but it's, it's close to zero. Almost every project has a waitlist.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, any other questions? I think that is everyone. So with that, we'll bounce back to info from commission and staff. Are there any items or info that any of the commissioners wish to share? Seeing none, pass it to Alyssa or anyone else from the staff who'd like to share anything.
Okay, great. Just want to remind you of your upcoming meetings. Your next meeting is next Tuesday, and that's actually in person here at the Atrium Building, and that will be a work session on urban growth strategies, on housing and job actions. And then your last meeting of the year is on Tuesday, the sixteenth. That will be a virtual meeting. There's a public hearing and possible action on a refinement plan amendment zone change. And then also you will continue with deliberations on the public health standards. And I also just wanted to mention, just for your information, we do have a building permit in for an e-commerce facility out in the Clear Lake Industrial Expansion Area, the area that was brought into the urban growth boundary in 2018. There is a building permit in, so Commissioner Lear is correct, it's not something that would come before the commission. It is a permitted outright use for a warehouse and distribution center, and it is currently under, under review as a building permit. So just so you have that information. And that, that is all that I have, so we will look forward to seeing you in person next week.
Well, thank you so much. It'll be great to see everyone in person. And, oh, Commissioner Beeson, did you have something you want to share?
I do. The other third item we have at the end of the agenda is how are we doing? I, I was uncomfortable tonight when we allowed one minute for the seven people who came here to give us comments. I, I'm not entirely recalling exactly what all goes into how we set up to decide to give ten minutes. I know, I, I don't have a crystal ball on anything. I've been through enough of these meetings, though, over the last several years, that I was pretty sure tonight we'd be done before seven-thirty, and we are. I, I guess I would just, I, I'm not sure that we need to have any discussion about it tonight. I'd like to just throw it out there for a kind of future discussion, maybe between Alyssa and Jason or Commissioner Lear, if you're setting the agenda. And when we do public comment, and it's a meeting like this, is I don't think we even do public comment on a night we have public hearings. I think we traditionally don't, not really remembering exactly, but it, I, I think on, and I know sometimes if we have some kind of an issue and there's like thirty people, I'm not suggesting we give long periods of time, but I think on an occasion like this, if we had seven people, I think several of the people, I think, had some things to say, and a minute felt awfully short. So I'm just registering that as a constructive comment going forward. We're the Citizen Involvement Committee for the entire city of Eugene. I think of us as kind of a conduit, I guess, in part, back to the council and, and anyway, so I would, that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. I appreciate your feedback on that, and I think that is something we can, we can talk about prior to, to future meetings when we intend to have public comment on the agenda. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Commissioner Beeson, I agree with you, too. It did feel a little bit short as people were going through, so I think that process is a little bit informal and kind of, decision gets made a little bit on the spot, but definitely a point well taken, and I think we want to honor everyone who came out and spent their time after work to come and speak before Planning Commission, to have a chance to get their message out. All right, well, with that said, thank you all. The meeting of the Planning Commission is now adjourned. We'll see you next week.